I'd like to call a meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sorel, here. Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Councilor Grasso?
Here.
Councilor Farini?
Here.
Councilor Marchand?
Here.
Councilor Penalakis?
Yes.
Councilor Hines?
Yeah.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yeah.
Councilor Whitehouse?
Yeah.
I'd like to ask everyone to rise for a moment of silent prayer, and then the Assistant Mayor, Alec Hanson, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by "God Bless America."
The pledge allegiance?
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The presentation that we were going to have tonight by the Frankie Boomer Post, American color guard, will not be here. They had a death of a commander in Maine, and that's where they've got to be this evening. But we will probably have them at our next meeting. I would like to have the new President of the Greater Portsmouth Chamber of Commerce, Dick Ingram, come forward, say a few words, and I have a gift for you, too, Dick.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody. I am Dick Ingram, the new President of the Portsmouth Chamber, and I really appreciate the invitation and the opportunity to come to this meeting and to introduce myself to all of you. I've had the opportunity to meet a number of you, and for those that I haven't, I look forward to the opportunity to do that, and just to offer myself in service to the city, quite frankly. I look forward to the Chamber being an active partner with the city and a good citizen in the city, and I will just say I'm having the time of my life. With all due respect to everybody else that's working in Portsmouth, I think I got the best job. So, I'm happy to be here, and I invite you all to, if there's ever anything that you feel that I or the Chamber can do, please call. We answer and we intend to be responsive, so I thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight.
Thank you, Dick, very much. And I do have just a small gift that you can think of the mayor and city councilors when you have your coffee in the morning. Thank you for coming, Dick. Now, we're down to the Portsmouth Middle School. Kent Lepage, Chair of the School Board, and before I introduce him, I would like to say that I asked Kent to come before us tonight to explain and calm down many rumors that are going through the city, and a lot of them are aimed at the council. A lot of people don't understand that the council has nothing to do with the school department. You own the buildings. It's up to you. So, I'm going to ask Kent to speak, and then, at the end of your presentation, I'm going to allow each council to ask you questions.
Well, we broke around this afternoon, no, just... (laughing) I want to thank Mayor Sorel, councilors, for the time this evening, so that, again, rumors and misnotions that are out there can be put to rest of where we are and what we're doing. In 1996, we had the first meeting in regards to building a new high school. That was in 96, where it was us meeting with teachers, faculties, and a full board. The three following years, we had workshops with the city council at that time discussing options that were before us. The three different workshops then led into a final workshop, a fourth workshop that concluded at the end of the year 2000, where that of budgeting and the educational narrative were brought forth. We worked well in a unity as a team. I want to give thanks to this, because we will be, by the way, and I will tell you, it'll be the first or second week of February celebrating the new high school, not the VOTEC Center, but I think there are a couple of individuals I want to make sure that, as we progress over the next five to six years of what may be happening or may not happen as a middle school, that Bill Wagner was an outstanding member, Joanne Grasso has been an outstanding member, along with Laura Penalakis. In this past year, Mr. Farini joined on the JBC. This joint work has made so that the total understanding of how building projects would move along could happen to a city that well deserved it for its students. Currently, the Portsmouth Middle School is a 1930s building. It was designed for that of a junior high where many people would graduate and not go on to school. Last year, ten months ago, ten months ago in December, a fact-finding committee was formed that included a city member, that Councilor Marchand, sorry, Marchand, last year, to attend. These met on a periodical basis of every month to discuss with, along with people of Team Design and visiting other middle schools and junior highs throughout the New England area. A total of five schools were visited throughout New England. The discussions were of what is and cannot be done with the building. A full outline of this was sent to you in late August, and also to the full board of Portsmouth, the Portsmouth School Board, along with that also a copy going to George Cushing and other members of the city, of our city. It has been found that the building is that of beautiful architecture, but of great need and many codes that cannot be corrected. This led the school board to make decisions of where do we go next. We are in 1996 of where we were with the high school. If we look out at this time, we may or may not be able to find ways to speed up the process, but we are at about where we were in 1996, where we began just looking at science labs. If we all remember, that is what began the process at the high school. There are many deficits at the middle school that our teachers do an outstanding job to work with. It is a great building, but the findings, as you were given the last week of August, shows what can and can't be done. If, in the future, we're looking at many different sites, the sites are not mentioned, but we are looking at probably five to six different sites possibly, not to say that we're not even not looking at the current site where the middle school is, but taking that road would mean that the board and the council would have to forego the 30% from the state. Actually, it's a little bit more than 30%, I keep hearing that. There's a rumor we actually get slightly more, because we do bring in some students from Newington on the seventh and eighth grade. The actions that the board set forth in September were a total of three. One was to have that of Team Design to look at concepts. What conceptually do we want? What type of school? Three stories, two stories, one story? Group classrooms? Classrooms of clusters? How does that work? And again, that process alone would probably take a good year. Locations. Again, as I mentioned, the current location would not garner a state reimbursement of 30%. So, it is a site that can be looked at, but we would have to forego that 30%. A meeting with Bob Lister, myself, the mayor, and the city manager brought us to this point this evening, where we are to discuss or give you information. We have no complete plans. We are not looking for bonding for at least two to three years, at the best. There is no way that we can come back without locations and sit with you in a workshop. The minute we have locations, we will ask for your time, once again, to sit down at the table and talk about locations. After locations, another workshop. Months after that, a type of school we would do, and cost of school. So, as I stand here tonight, the educational narrative of a new middle school is being worked on with Team Design, with encumbered funds that come back from the year 2000. These encumbered funds originally went out, and Peter, you can correct me, in 2000 to do both the high school and that of the renovations in addition to the New Franklin School. So, I guess I consider this recycled money would be one way to say that. Peter, correct? So, there has been absolutely no tax dollars at this time that have been spent to go out to do what we have. There has not been any increase of tax dollars on this, and before we make any single move, we will be back to you. I would hope that we would be back within a year to sit down and talk to you of concepts and locations and educational narratives. It could be longer. So, at this time, I don't know if anybody else has anything else to say, but we ask that each decision-making body be here. John Stokel, Principal of the Portsmouth Middle School, Nancy Clayberg, my Vice Chair, outstanding member of the middle school concept, along with, like I said, Mr. Marchand, Bob Lister, who is working hard on educational narratives with it, our distinguished baseball fan, Dr. Lionel Tracy, glad the Red Sox aren't playing tonight, and then Peter Torrey, an individual who could not be replaced on the current high school plan, nor any future endeavors that we look towards. And again, I apologize from the board's side if there was any miscommunications that we were about to go and embark and come to you as individuals for funding. Long before that, I can promise you, there will be a minimum of two workshops and possibly a third, so that we are all on the same page of what is best for the students of the Portsmouth school area. Questions?
Thank you very much, Kent. Yes, I'm quite sure we've got a few. Laura?
Yeah, I think I just would like to say that you can understand why, as a counselor, you would be a little bit upset to see that the school board spent $60,000 when we were pressed for money and were told that if we didn't, if we cut your budget any more than we did, that you couldn't hire teachers. And the second thing was that people out there don't understand, and they wonder how they're going to pay for a high school and then turn around and pay for a middle school all in the same few years. You know, it just seemed as though it got started a little too quick.
Yeah, Laura, I think you understand that that $60,000 that's being spent is recycled money. It's money that has not increased, and it's money that could not have been used for anything but what it's being used for. It could not, it could never be used for anything but the research of going there. I don't, I forget what that number originally was, but this was the encumbered money that never got used, that comes back to the school department, that's been there from, like I said, the year 2000. And again, in regards to those that had individuals, those scarce, I had calls on both sides. You know, I have had a number of calls with people, what support can we give to you to have a better middle school? And I think that's where we, as a unit, need to get together and say what is best for the students and the population of Portsmouth. So, I appreciate that, Laura. Thank you.
Thank you.
Harold?
I attended that school board meeting in this council chambers, and reading about it the next day on the front page, I couldn't believe it was the same meeting I attended. They gave very little coverage in reference to a motion that was made by Charlie Vaughn to table this for a year, hoping that maybe the taxpayers of this city would get back on their feet. We had just passed a $36 million bond issue two years ago, and also, we've attained some money from the state to update our VOCAD center, our tech center. So, there was a lot of discussion in reference to that motion, and it was very, very, very little coverage on that. And it wouldn't have passed, that motion wouldn't have passed from the committee unless your finance director, Peter Torrey, stated that this money had already been encumbered, and it's not $60,000. I thought it was $54,000.
I believe that's correct.
So, you know, it's, they scared the public with the front-page story the following day, and you can't blame the public for being a little upset when they see new junior high to break ground, our bonding will be coming to the city council for our new junior high or middle school in the near future. So, you know, it's an issue that should have been reported correctly and thoroughly, and if anybody watched the tapes or attended the meeting, they would have known that this is, this wasn't going to happen for a long period of time, a new middle school.
Appreciate it, Harold.
Ned?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Kent, I wrote you and requested, you know, send copies of a letter to the other members of the school committee and copied my colleagues here on the council some three weeks, a month ago. I try to, certainly try to open all my mail and read everything that comes to me. Have you written me?
No, I haven't.
A letter of response?
No, because what I've done is that's been forwarded off to the committee to actually, and as I discussed tonight, we will be discussing sites, you know, in the future with the current committee that's working on it, with John Stokel and so forth, and I have not gotten back to them, as I've just started into a new business and been a little backlogged.
Yeah, no, I understand. I honestly, I wasn't being sarcastic about that. I try to open all the mail, but sometimes I miss things. Reason I asked that upfront is because my letter was, you know, as I remember, going on to three pages. I worked pretty hard on it over a matter of, over some time to sort of organize my many thoughts on the subject and, you know, to organize them and then articulate them in a letter in an understandable way, and it came out to 10 different, you know, points about this large subject of a prospect of a new middle school. And quite a few of those points were really addressing fundamental premises on which I believed that the building committee had been operating. And I do not want to, I mean, you just said in your earlier answer here that, you know, we're talking about new sites. My letter raised a number of significant points about some of the very premises on which this whole debate is, you know, or this discussion is being based. And I do want to point out, as I did in my letter, I have two children who are, you know, one's in kindergarten now and one's in preschool, and they'll be going to middle school in the next decade here in Portsmouth. So, I have as high a stake as anyone in this city in the quality of the education that they'll receive, and that includes, obviously, is affected by whatever building will constitute Portsmouth Middle School 10 years from now. But I would greatly appreciate a letter, response, with the same, crafted with the same care and thought that I crafted my letter to you, just addressing each of those 10 points. I'm not, you know, it may not, I'm not, there's no final answer, certainly at this stage, but I would like to see that letter answered along those 10 points.
And I'd have to just respond to that, Mayor, is that, again, me, a member that does not, or a member of the board that does not sit on that, I will work with Nancy and John Stokel with that, but you also have a member that sits on that board with us, Steve sits on that, and that information does flow. I would like to say that a lot of that is premature in any type of decision-making. We are nowhere near, out of the 10 points that you may point out, including the one of what can and can't be done with that current school. Like I said, this board and this council will have to wrestle that if they decide to stay in that spot, the state will not reimburse us the 30%. It has to have X amount of acreage, and it will never meet that criteria. So, that's, that's...
Actually, that's one of the premises that was in my letter. I don't, I don't agree with that.
Yeah, and if that's...
I don't think that's gospel.
What's that?
I wouldn't accept that as gospel.
That's fact. State Department of Ed will not accept any new middle school on X amount of acreage, and I don't know the acreage.
New laws and standards are enacted all the time, and exceptions to legislation are enacted every day.
We'll get the information on it, so that you can see it. I'll have Peter forward that information along.
I understand current state law has a standard.
Yes.
Yep.
We'll get into it deeper, but not now. Steve?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Kent, for the presentation, and if somebody gets to go to the meetings, it's easy to understand how somebody who does not go to the meetings would hear things like what Harold was saying and maybe come to an alarming but premature conclusion. That said, one of my, as the only council member on the, at the meetings, I, perhaps I'm the only person there whose reelection as compared to school board members is tied most closely to the level of taxation, more so than the school board members, with all due respect. It's more of a policymaking as compared to a pure fiscal sort of thing. So, that said, I, that's the part of my brain that works hardest at these meetings, because sometimes I'm, I think I'm the only person for whom that's my primary responsibility. Certainly, you said that in 1990, we're kind of in 1996 in terms of the middle school process. Now, I was not here in 1996, but at the risk of maybe being wrong, I'm going to, I'm going to guess that the feeling of the taxpayers today is probably less like 1996 and maybe more like 1990 or 1986 in terms of the timetable, that my concern is that we may come up with a policy in terms of the type of school we want and that sort of thing much, much earlier than the taxpayers' ability or willingness to pay those dollars to execute the very good idea. And that the time between the idea and when the money is there to execute the idea could be a long, long gap indeed. Maybe, my guess would be longer than the high school gap, but a while, anyway. And so, that's one thing that I would just stress to keep in mind. First, that the public should not be concerned that this is money that's going to be paid next month or six months from now or next year, but also to the committee that this is something that may not be in two or three years as well. I wish, I have a one-year-old, and I have a second one on the way, due in May. I'm going to get busy again. But, and I have two kids that are very invested in the school system. My family is very invested in getting a great new middle school. But I also talk to an awful lot of people who are a tax increase away from losing their home or thinking about losing their home, or thinking about putting their home up for sale, and they've been here for decades longer than I've been alive. And those are the people that, in my job, I feel I have to watch out for as well. I know you do, too, but that's just something I want to put on the table, and I think if people know that we're all thinking that way, they'll have increased confidence in the school board and administrators and the city council that we're thinking about excellent policy, like you guys do, and excellent fiscal policy. So, but you guys are doing a great job, and that's just something I want to make sure is kept in mind.
That's why we'll have the workshops. I appreciate it, Steve.
Councilor Grasso, and then Councilor Farini.
Thank you, Your Honor. I couldn't, I want to thank Steve. I think you've said it very, very, very well. I think talking about looking at this two or three years down the road is being so optimistic that it is not realistic at all. The public that have spoken to me are not ready to go that route that quickly. I think if we need a new middle school, it is much further down the road, and it won't be bonded right away. And I want to say that there's an awful lot of good teaching and a lot of good learning occurring at the present middle school, that the building does not necessarily frame the education that's happening there. I know it's important to probably bring the building or bring a middle school in that is more in keeping with the 21st century, but the children that go there now are getting an excellent education. And I did just want to reiterate again that please don't talk about two to three years, because it's not being realistic at all, as far as I can tell. Thanks.
John?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just briefly add to Stephen's well-thought-out comments and those of Joanne. I think what's happening is that there is a different sensitivity in the community that is reflected in us as elected officials that may not have previously been there. Do I think we need a new junior high school? Yes, I do. I went to that junior high school, and I'm sure the teaching is wonderful, but I certainly think we need to rethink or perhaps look at what we might do as a community for a middle school going forward, but there is an increased sensitivity to taxation in this community that I think is partially reflected in this council, and I respectfully ask that you know that that's what's going to make us tick. And I look forward to the process as we go forward. I think a marvelous job has been done with the high school, but we do have to look at the long-term public agenda and what we really can swallow as a city. Thank you.
Any other questions of Kent? Kent, I want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to thank the board. I can see who the Red Sox winner is sitting out there. Hi, Nan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for coming. I, hopefully, this will rest a lot of people that were saying that the city council, we were going to move in the middle school, all kinds of crazy stuff. So, that should take care of rumors.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Lionel, you're an awful stranger. I haven't seen you for quite a while.
After the World Series.
(laughing) Okay, where are we now? I have a comment. Now, we're down to the public comment session, and we have two speakers tonight, and I'm quite sure they realize that it's three minutes, and when your three minutes are up, our, I was just going to call you the Attorney General.
Oh, that's okay.
(laughing) Our city attorney will hold up the sign.
Couldn't afford the pay cut.
The first speaker is Peter Braziano, and he is going to speak regarding the budget process.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, sitting council members and staff. First of all, as a Yankee fan, I want to congratulate all the Red Sox fans for the pennant win and hope they go on to take the series. And I guess this year, I can say like I've heard for the last 50 years, wait until next year. As for the budget process, and I know you're into that, and John has brought that up, and you're probably going to have work sessions on it, I just wanted to give you my thoughts on, I think, one of the, one of the important things that might happen this year in the budget process, and that is public hearings on the budget. And I'll give you an example, the school board. The school board holds a public hearing prior to their budget sessions, and I, in the past, used to always think, well, that was crazy, and I used to get up and rail about why you're doing a public hearing before they, before you even get into the process. But over the years, I've learned that it's a, it's a good idea. It gives the residents and the taxpayers of Portsmouth a chance to get up before the city council and say, this is what we expect, this is what we, we kind of want to see in the next budget, the city budget. And for taxpayers to get up here prior to the council going into those budget sessions with the police department, the fire department, Public Works, and the City Hall, it would be advantageous to have a public hearing where we could get up here and say, look, and I'll give you an example, if negotiations for contracts were to come up next year, which they're not, but we could stand here and say, we just can't afford a 10% increase in city employee salaries, which they would love. So, that being said, I hope that when you do decide on a, on the budget process, that you'll think about this first step and to have public hearings prior to the budget process. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. The final speaker is Joe Kelly, and he wants to speak regarding zoning overlay.
Thank you, Mayor Sorel, and thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Joe Kelly. I own a condominium unit at 93 High Street, which is attached to the building that's on the corner with Hanover. It's a two-story condominium unit, one, it's one level, street-level unit, and one unit, one level above that. And I've actually already been negatively affected by the proposed amendment to the zoning, so, but I did have my, my property for sale this summer, and we had a sales agreement on it, and when the prospective buyer discovered that there was this proposal going through the city, the agreement fell through. So, I just thought that would be an interesting thing for people to realize. I think this kind of a change in the zoning is not just going to affect the general way that the city feels as far as people being able to live downtown, but I think it may also affect the value of the properties to a certain extent. My property is classified as commercial or residential, and I'm not sure if that would happen or not, but this kind of a change raises a specter that I could have my lower level governed by one set of zoning regulations and the upper floor regulated by a separate set of zoning regulations. set of zoning regulations. So, I just wanted to talk about that for a minute and let you know that I do oppose that amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, very much. That ends the public comment session. We're down to the public hearing. I will read the notice, and then, before we get into the meeting, the Assistant Mayor Hanson would like to speak to it. Notice hereby given, Ordinance Amending, Chapter Seven, Article Three, Section Seven, Period Three, Three, Zero. No parking, Lincoln Avenue, southerly side from Richards Avenue, a distance of forty feet westerly, and from Miller Avenue, a distance of eighty feet easterly. Alex?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before the public hearing, I wanna notify the public that we went out and looked at this again after some discussion at previous city council meeting and met with the- all of the abutters, or most of the abutters, and we originally were talking about the southerly side, and I will be introducing an amendment that has no parking on the southerly side and a smaller parking section from Richards Avenue, twenty-five feet on the northerly side, and from Miller Avenue, one hundred and thirty-five feet, which goes easterly between Miller and Broad Street. So, that will be an amendment that we'll be doing. It allows the buses, quite frankly, when you're coming up Richards Avenue, to make that right-hand turn a little bit more freely, and it makes it a little bit safer, and I think all of the stakeholders that were out there were in full agreement with that. We'll have a little less parking, but it seems to satisfy the neighborhood.
Thank you, Alex. I will open this up for first-time speakers against simply two or four. Do I have any speakers? Please come forward. Second time around, do I have any speakers? Third and final time before I close the public hearing, do I have any speakers? Close. We're down to the approval of grants and donations. The first one is the acceptance of a donation to the cemetery committee. So, moved.
My second.
Would you read the amount, Counselor, so the people will know?
It's from the Judge Gregg Committee. It's one hundred dollars to the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Cemetery Committee.
Thank you. Did I get a second on that?
Aye.
Are you all ready for the vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. The acceptance of the Homeland Security Grants, shipboard firefighters' drill, and hazardous material and terrorism drill. We'll basket them all together. Somebody like-
Your Honor, if I- Your Honor, if I may, can we please do these separately? One is already taking place, and we're getting reimbursement. The other is we're actually planning it, and we are going to have funding available up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, if you could do those separately, it'd be appreciated.
Very good.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Moved to accept the grant for reimbursement from the New Hampshire Bureau of Emergency Management, an amount of seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirteen cents for the shipboard fire drill conducted onboard the NOAA show at the New Hampshire State Port Authority on- pier on August sixteenth, two thousand and four.
Second. Very good. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Who would like to do the next one? John?
Sure. I recommend the city council vote to accept a grant from the New Hampshire Bureau of Emergency Management of up to three hundred and fifty thousand for the purpose of conducting a large-scale hazardous materials terrorism drill in spring of two thousand and four.
Very good. Um, very good. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. And the third and final one, who would like to do that? Arrow?
Yes, Your Honor. This is a grant for a park bench.
No, we're not down there yet.
Yes, Your Honor.
Oh.
Yes, we asked.
We did all three?
The two.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought there were three. Very good. Go ahead, Arrow.
Yes, this is a grant for donations for a park bench for a very, very good friend of mine, George Brady, who passed away suddenly a short time ago. A thousand dollars from Coastal Athletic Association, Inc., two hundred dollars from Gary C. Stigwaks and Mary Jane Sturwaks, a hundred dollars from the Arthur F. Brady III Fund, another two hundred dollars from the James Brady Stigwak Trustee and Mary Jane Brady Trust Fund, fifty dollars from Thomas A. Brown, twenty-five dollars from Cynthia Sweeney, two hundred and twenty-five dollars from the James Brady Stigwak Trustee, Mary Jane Brady Trust, two hundred dollars from the Arthur Brady III Trust, two hundred dollars from the Michael F. Reeve, two hundred dollars from Elizabeth W. Brady, and a hundred dollars from Dr. William McCawley and Eggenberg McCawley. That's a grand total, Your Honor, of- I haven't added them all up, Your Honor.
Yeah.
Twenty-five hundred dollars, Your Honor. Twenty-five hundred.
Two thousand five hundred.
Two thousand five hundred.
Five hundred, yes.
Mm-hmm. Very good. Can I get a second on that?
A second.
Okay, very good. All ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now, we are down to considerations and resolutions of ordinances. The first reading of Ordinance Amending, Chapter Eight, Article Two, Section Eight, Period Two, O, Two, Dog Pot Rules and Regulations. I'll pass this to Counselor Pandalakis, seeing she's our dog girl.
Moved to pass first reading of amended ordinance as submitted and hold a public hearing and second reading at the November eighth, two thousand and four city council meeting.
Second. Um, discussion? Did you wanna speak to it, Laura?
No, I think if I put everything in it that we need it, we'll pass.
Okay, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. First reading of Ordinance Amending, Chapter Seven, Article Three, Section Seven, Period Three, Three, Zero. No parking, Islington Street, Route One, bypass, overpass.
Madam Mayor, moved to pass first reading of the amended ordinance as submitted and hold a public hearing and second reading at the November eighth city council meeting.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. Do I get a second?
Second.
Very good. Discussion, Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes, Your Honor. This ordinance probably was put in effect many years ago, and I noticed under D, it mentions northerly side from Bartlett Street to the West End Cafe. Now, the West End Cafe has been out of business for probably twenty-five years, and either we make the change now or after the second reading. I'm suggesting this.
Very good.
And use the number of block buildings, because I looked it up, it's a six hundred and twenty-five block building in that area where the West End Cafe used to be. So, this is just a suggestion. Either we do it now or after the second reading.
Uh, Bob?
Your Honor, if we can describe where the West End Cafe was in a way that satisfies the objective necessities of an ordinance, it's probably better to just do it right now.
It's between six hundred and twenty-five Islington and six hundred and twenty-seven Islington. It took up one large- two large blocks, the West End Cafe. So, I think the city manager or the city attorney should verify that number.
I don't think we're gonna be able to do it right now, Your Honor. We'll prepare an ordinance and bring it in.
Okay, sounds good. Any other discussion on that? All- yes.
Can we just have the first reading with that, the city attorney making the appropriate change and brought back to the first reading?
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay, very good.
So-
All ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. We're down to the second reading of Ordinance Amending, Chapter Seven, Article Three, Section Seven, Period Three, Three, Zero. No parking, Lincoln Avenue, southerly side from Richards Avenue, a distance of forty feet westerly, and from Miller Avenue, a distance of eighty feet easterly.
Madam Mayor, I move to amend the amendment that I've put before each of the councils, which reads, "The northerly side, number one, from Richards Avenue, twenty-five feet westerly, number two, from Miller Avenue, one hundred and thirty-five feet easterly, and three, between Miller and Broad Street, and there'll be no parking on the southerly side between the intersection of Miller Avenue continues Richard Avenue."
I'll second the amendment.
All right. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No, we're not, I'm sorry.
Your Honor, I just wanted to- as one counselor who had raised some concerns about the proposed change in the past, I just wanted to express my appreciation to Counselor- to the Assistant Mayor Hanson and the rest of the committee who went out and took a look, another look. I know the change that was made was also made for other reasons, and I'm glad that the interests coincide, because I appreciate the work of the committee in taking another look.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Third and final rea- what?
I moved- moved the motion as amended?
I'm sorry. Uh, second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Uh, mm, third and final reading of Ordinance Amending, Chapter Ten, Article One, Section Ten, Dash, One, O, Two. Definitions. Article Two, Section Ten, Dash, Two, O, One, A. Article Two, Section Ten, Dash, Two, O, Eight. Article Two, Section Ten, Dash, Two, One, Three, and zoning map downtown overlay district. What's your wish?
Question for the city attorney?
Uh, Bob?
Mr. Kelly just brought up the perfect example of what I discussed earlier. It's very difficult on this overlay section. It's my understanding, the way that we've got this worked out now, is that he could go to the ZBA and ask for a waiver on that. Is that correct? This is a small building right next to Cousin Richie that probably is changing from residential to maybe a professional architect or CPA or something like that, but they would be able to go. The process is to go to the ZBA?
Right. It wouldn't be a waiver, it would be for a variance.
For a var- he could go to the Board of Adjustment. So, if I wanted to purchase that property, I could make that part of my purchase and sale agreement to do that subject to approval of a variance from the ZBA.
That is commonly done.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Uh, could I just put this in the record? The gentleman could not get to the public hearing, and it's regarding the overlay, all right? And can be shared with each one of you.
Four against.
Um, he's kinda concerned because his whole place is commercial. Um, all right. Aye, Arrow?
Yes, at the last council meeting, I did mention publishing the map of the overlay to let the public know. This was an example from Mr. Kelly, but the map was published, and whoever was responsible, I appreciate it.
Joe Adler.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
Not yet, Mayor.
Um, I-
Anybody wanna make the motion?
Moved to pass third and final reading of the amended ordinance as submitted.
I'll second that.
All right. Discussion?
Uh, yes, Your Honor.
Yes, Counselor Grasso.
Mr. Kelly, can I ask Mr. Kelly a question?
Mr. Kelly?
Suspicious rules.
Uh, uh, hold on a minute, Mr. Kelly. Is everyone- does everyone approve it?
Yep.
Very good. Come right ahead. Go right up to the podium.
Mr. Kelly, in your building where the sales didn't go through, the first floor is being used how?
Uh, well, I used to have my business there until the year two thousand. Since then, I've been renting it out as a residence.
Okay. It's my understanding, and the client director is here, is my understanding that if it's being used now as a residential, as long as it's- there's no lapse there, it can continue to be used as a residential. That's grandfathered in. If there is a vacancy there for, I think David told us last time, eight months or thereabouts, then you have to conform to the new zoning. But as long as there's no- that place is not vacant for eight months or so, the residential can continue to be residential.
I see. That's good.
I think the purchaser- the prospective purchaser was concerned about saleability down the road, where she was afraid that as an investment in the future, if she wanted to sell the property in turn, that then it was- it wouldn't be clear whether the property was gonna be restricted for one particular use or another.
But now that you know, you can- you'll have that information. Uh, Bob?
Your Honor, just to save David Holden the effort of having-
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
You can sit down.
To come to the podium, I would confirm that the statement that was just made by Counselor Grasso is, in fact, the manner in which the amendment would be enforced.
Okay.
Exactly that way.
All right.
Eight months, unless it was vacant for eight months?
Yeah. Yeah.
You all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Down to third and final reading of Ordinance Amending, Chapter Seven, Article One. Parking meters, various sections. Article Four, off-street parking areas. Article Three, traffic ordinance, various sections. Article Nine, penalty, fortuitous, and separability. And Article Ten, towing, and various sections.
Moved to pass third and final reading? Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Certainly, Counselor.
Um, Arrow, does that change any of the rules and regulations that's in place about who does the towing and how it operates and whatnot?
Moves from the city attorney. Can I get a question?
No, it does not.
All ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. We're down to presentations and considerations of written communications and petitions. A letter from Lawrence Hannah Graham, I think. Age response Seacoast requesting permission to occupy eight spots on the city's public sidewalk on Wednesday, December first, two thousand and four, which is World Age Day. What's your wish, Counselor? Counselor Heinz, would you like to make the motion?
I would prefer to let someone more familiar with this issue make the motion because I have questions I may want to ask.
Okay.
Move the city manager with power? Second.
Uh, Counselor Heinz?
Uh, it just comes out in the question of where these sites will be and how they would impede regular foot traffic, if they would at all. So, if it's a choice of the city manager to pick the spots, then I would agree.
Uh, John will answer that. John?
Counselor Heinz, there is an attachment that lists the eight spots, but I think your question is more to make sure that there isn't undue obstruction. So, what I've done is I've talked to Jason Page, who will work with the individual to make sure there is no obstruction on the sidewalks.
Very good.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Whitehouse?
You know, they mentioned twenty individuals. I look at the location that they'll be stationed. There are eight locations, and there'll be two at each location, and there'll be four at Market Square. So, in my count, that only comes out to eighteen people instead of twenty. Two times seven is fourteen, plus four at Market Square, which is twenty. I mean, which is eighteen, it's not twenty. So, one street is missing or one corner is missing.
I'll ask him.
Thank you, Arrow.
He sympathizes here.
Johnny on the spot tonight.
Your Honor?
Yes, Counselor Grasso?
I also have a concern that they- why they said two people at each spot, that they, you know, if you're gonna have two people maybe side by side, or they could be spread out so that they're occupying a greater amount of space. So, I would like the city manager to look into that also.
Okay. John?
Yep.
Oh, he's writing it down like Ned. Are we all ready for the vote, Ned?
Uh, question. I work a block for Market Square, so I'm frequently going through there on my way home, and I seem to recall throughout the summer, almost every Friday, assemblies of- assemblies of, of people, um, holding signs and demonstrating, uh, on various political causes, um, lots more people than two in one place. Uh, how, are tho- have we, I don't recall that we've, uh, had to entertain, um, requests from groups to assemble that way. Uh, how does, how is this request different? In fact, I'm almost curious as to why they're having to ask.
Well, I think it's a courtesy that they're asking us.
Okay.
I mean, it's nice that they do.
Nice to ask, yeah.
And, uh, I think if you pose that question to the city attorney, uh, they probably would have the right to stand on that sidewalk anyways.
This gets to be remarkably-
Kind of what I'm getting at.
-complex. Uh, there's a First Amendment issue, frankly, that winds all through this.
Absolutely.
Uh, in general, the city council has the right to control obstructions on sidewalks. If people wish to block the passage of travel, they can't do that without permission from the city council. However, the sidewalks downtown, and particularly, for example, in front of the North Church, have, through use and through acquiescence by the municipal government, become, uh, what will be characterized as a public forum for First Amendment analysis purposes. And what that means is that in making any determinations with regard to who could do anything there, including obstructing the sidewalk, the city council cannot make content-based distinctions. Um, what happens, I think, with the Friday afternoon group of people is that they are using the sidewalk, are using it for their expressive purposes, but they do not have permission to obstruct that sidewalk. Um, they couldn't put up a table or a chair, for example, something that, that pedestrians would, uh, uh, have trouble negotiating. Um, frankly, with permission from the city council, a group such as this group making the request right now has permission to obstruct the sidewalk. They actually have more authority or power, because you are giving it to them, than the people who just show up on a Friday afternoon and stand in front of the North Church.
Very good. Yes, Ned?
Well, I'm, that's a little, I'm not, I don't see in their letter that they're actually requesting to obstruct the sidewalk, so I don't think we need the alarm that they, that they are.
Yeah, it's like I said, it's a courtesy.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a courtesy here, and I'm just sort of pointing out the fact that people have the right to stand and hold signs and do things all they want, and it is nice that they've asked us, but-
Mm-hmm. Just be careful, you might get more signs than you want. Uh, Steve?
I just want to say, uh, not in jest, seriously, if they're half as considerate, uh, on the sidewalk as they've been in making a formal request, uh, I'm not anticipating any problems.
All right, very good. We all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. We're down now to the city manager, and John has five items that require action.
Thank you, Your Honor. The, uh, first item deals with the city, uh, the city council, uh, schedule for two thousand and five, and I sent to you last meeting, a, uh, proposed two thousand and five meeting schedule for you, and, uh, hearing that there were no objections to it, I would recommend that we approve this schedule as presented. As always, you can add or change meetings throughout the year, but I think it's important that we get this on the website and let people know, uh, when our meetings are going to be for next year. So I'd recommend approval of the two thousand and five city council's schedule as presented.
So moved.
Second. No discussion? Uh, Harold?
Uh, this is just a concern. May nineteenth, the municipal budget work session at six thirty, that is the third Thursday in the month. Uh, we do have a representative from the city council sitting on the planning board, right?
We do.
Well, you didn't pick this up?
Gee.
I picked it up, but I figured in the interest of the common good, I would perhaps forego my planning board meeting in the event there were sufficient alternatives to serve.
That's all right.
All right.
All ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Your Honor, for the next item, I'd like to have, uh, Dave Holden come down to report back regarding proposed zoning request, uh, that, uh, was made, uh, last, uh, time, with a date certain, uh, to be brought back to the city council from the planning board. This is a zoning request, uh, that was, uh, regarding single residence B located between Interstate ninety-five and Rockingham Avenue, and the other one was secondary, uh, currently zoned office research. David?
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, the planning board, uh, took this request, and in reviewing of it, um, basically considered how this issue had been considered as part of a larger series of rezonings, and how that the planning board was continuing to conduct work sessions on it, and voted to recommend that these, uh, particular requests still be considered as part of the overall master plan process, and that it would be part of the future land use map, and as such be subject to a public hearing before the planning board in the near future. Essentially, what the planning board is indicating is that they are looking at these sites in conjunction with a number of other sites, and will complete that process and report the same to the council.
Thank you, David. Therefore, Your Honor, I'd recommend the city council, uh, accept the planning board's recommendation.
Did I get a second?
I didn't get a, a-
Did I get a motion, everybody?
Can I ask David a question?
Yes.
What's the timeline?
At the present time, we're still on the same schedule with the master plan, so I would be expecting we'll be reviewing drafts and probably looking at some action by the end of the year.
Thank you.
Uh, do I get a motion on this? Come on, councillors.
Your Honor?
Uh-
Second.
Somebody's-
No, no, I gotta make a motion.
Who made the motion?
No motion, yeah.
Martha Farini.
I did not.
No.
I did.
Nobody made them. Oh, you made it, Steve?
I heard him.
And Laura seconded. Okay, very good. Discussion?
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes.
I would just like to say, with respect to these, as I, you sit on the planning board, to the extent that one of the proposals, uh, affects the Islington Street area, uh, I am recused from the, although there's no, I understand, application pending, there has been with respect to Islington Woods, and I've recused myself from that specific issue with regard to the planning board. Having said that, it's my understanding that I'm able to comment in general as regards these, uh, proposals as they come to the planning board. The planning board, in its recommendation fashion, acting in its legislative and not its, uh, sort of quasi-judicial capacity. And so, uh, I, I do support bringing it back, uh, as, as is suggested. I support the motion. I just felt I should make my fellow councillors aware of my position.
Thank you. Uh, any other discussion on this before we take it to a vote? Joanne, did you have anything on this? You didn't have anything on this. Okay, guess we're all ready for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Next item deals with an application for Land and Water Conservation Fund grant for Sagamore Headlands. Um, what we're going to be doing, if the city council approves it tonight, is, uh, look at applying, uh, for up to, up to a hundred thousand dollars on the Land and Water Conservation Fund, uh, to do a, uh, a public docking area for canoe and kayak, uh, so that, uh, it could, uh, participate in a water trail which is being developed, uh, in the Sagamore Creek headlin- headlands, uh, that is off of Sagamore Avenue. The grant source requires local matching funds consisting of at least fifty percent of the project cost, and we anticipate the local matching funds will be included in the city's FY two thousand and six, two thou- twenty eleven capital improvement plan. The grant application, once completed, will be submitted to the state by November fifth, uh, which is the deadline. The grant funds are awarded. Engineering design cost estimates permitting work would need to be completed prior to the project construction. Therefore, I would recommend the city council vote to authorize me to apply for, accept and expend the grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund program for the design and construction of a public dock at the Sagamore Creek Headlands.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Thank you, Your Honor. Next item is request for approval of pole license agreement sixty-three four eleven. City Public Works Department has reviewed the pole location information bu- provided by PSNH for petition and pole license sixty-three four eleven. PSNH is requesting this pole to provide mid-span support for their aerial lines along Boerthel Avenue. Because of poor soil conditions, the terminal pole, which we provide you with a photo, and its guide wire continued to sag resulting in the need for this mid-pan, uh, excuse me, mid-span pole request. Public Works Department has advised me that the installation of this pole would pose no impact to existing city infrastructure, and the Public Works Department recommends approval of this license.
The Assistant Mayor has assumed the chair and recognizes the mayor.
I'd like to, uh, approve the request for the pole license number six three dash four one one, and if I get a second, I'd like to speak to it.
Okay, that's the motion. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councillor Laura Panalakis. I'm Madam Mayor.
Uh, you have, you all have a letter from Neely Razor down on Broad Street, and she was the woman that was very concerned about the utility pole at one ninety-two Lincoln, Lincoln Avenue, and it was right in the middle of her driveway. They came down, took the pole out, fixed it up beautiful, and she's very, very pleased. So I said to myself, I had told John I wasn't going to vote for any more pole licenses until that was done, and it was done, and she's very happy. I went down and they did a beautiful job.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. I'm going to turn the chair back over to the mayor.
Your Honor, I have just a couple items under information, if I might. Uh, the first item, I'd like to remind, uh, the council, if you're not already aware, that we do have a work session Thursday night at six thirty in Conference Room A, and I sent out a memorandum regarding that, that's going to be on, uh, second work session on the budget process in format, so all of you should have that memorandum. The next item I'd like to talk to is the, uh, issue of the, uh, the tax rate. Uh, I have, uh, provided each of you a press release on, uh, the two thousand and five tax rate. Uh, the city went to the Department of Revenue Administration, and working with the DRA, they certified our tax rate at seventeen dollars and seventeen cents for two thousand and five, which is fifty-seven cents below last year's seventeen dollars and seventy-four cent rate. What this essentially means is that residential properties will see a decrease in their taxes. An average home that is, uh, valued at three hundred thousand dollars will see about a hundred and seventy-one dollar reduction in their taxes. Uh, the other parts of the, uh, press release have been provided, uh, to, uh, the press, and, um, it goes into more detail as to why we've been able to reduce our rate more than anticipated. Uh, there really is one major reason. Uh, we won a Supreme Court case in which fifty million dollars of value that was being assessed out at, uh, the Peace Development, uh, Trade Port was no longer being part of our equalized value, thus reducing the amount we had to pay in statewide property tax, and reducing the amount we had to pay in county tax. Also, we've had, uh, a, a very, very good year in new growth.
Thank you, John. That's great news.
Big news, yeah.
Does anyone have any comment on that?
Um, let me just check to see if I have, oh, wait, let me see. No, Your Honor, that's all I have.
Very good, John. Does anyone have any questions of John? We're all set, then we go to the mayor. Okay, mine is short and sweet tonight. Uh, first of all, I have a letter from the, uh, Central Veterans Council inviting all of us, the people out there, uh, on November eleventh, is, uh, requested by the members of the Veterans Council to a step off at ten thirty AM from the, uh, VFW in Proceedup Maplewood, uh, into Islington and on to, and into Goodwin Park. They do this every year, and, uh, they ask if anyone would like to speak, please let them know. And, um, you can farm down at VFW and march right up with them. Uh, so that is an invitation from Kyle Walton. Uh, then we have an invitation in your file, uh, to the Hislip Park Improvement Project ribbon cutting, and that's going to be on October twenty-seventh, two thousand and four, at five fifteen PM. If it's raining, it will be Friday, October twenty-ninth, at five fifteen. Hislip, Hislip Park is on Pebble Way in Atlantic Heights, and we should all be very, very proud of what community development has done for Atlantic Heights. I watched that start to go down almost into a slum area, and now it's totally beautiful. So I hope you'll all take the time, if you can, and come to that ribbon cutting. Then the other thing is, we, I got a beautiful letter from, uh, Elizabeth Lamson, and, uh, she says, "Dear Cemetery Committee Members," and right now I want to say, um, Audrey Burnham and her husband, Er- Irwin, have worked so very, very hard for this cemetery, uh, project, and they deserve a lot of credit. They truly do. This woman, I wish to thank the Cemetery Committee by having the repair work done to the John Wendell tomb located in the Pleasant Street Cemetery. It is a beautiful restoration job. Have you seen it? She's asking me. The tomb has not looked so good in decades. When I visit, visited in August, I spoke with Roger Cypress and watched the mason contractor point the bricks. My most recent visit in September saw the completed job. Now, this is from Elizabeth Lamson, and she is John Wendell's great, 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 great granddaughter. And, uh, she's paid quite a few visits to us, uh, from California, and that was a nice treat for the Cemetery Committee. And whenever you get a chance, it'd be nice if you ran in and sat at one of their meetings. I know they would enjoy it. Uh, that's it for the mayor, and now we're down to Councillor Pandalakis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have asked to have the, um, look at the regulations for panhandling, as, one night last week, I was going to Demola's, and there was, uh, three lanes of traffic, and all of a sudden we stopped at the stoplight, and we were converged to, by three or four men with white buckets in their hands, holding up dollar bills and pointing for us to put the money in their thing. So I felt that this was like when I was, first time I ever went to Florida, and then I was riding with my son, and we stopped at a stop sign. The next thing I know, we were putting flowers in the window and spraying them, and I don't want to see the streets torchen like that. So when I, I had to return about an hour later, and they were still there. So I came down to the police station, and I asked if we, if they had, because I stopped and asked the gentleman, uh, "Do you have a permit to do this?" And, um, he said, "The police said it was all right." So I came down and spoke with the captain that was on duty, and they had no way of stopping those people, except, with the exception that they went up and told them they could not, um, harass people in cars and get in front of the cars. But it was a dangerous situation, because we were at a stoplight, and they were going in between the cars, and not only were they there, but they were also down the street, uh, as you turn on the bridge to go to Main on Market Street Extension. And I know that young people have to, when they want to have tag, tag day, days, have to have permits. And I believe that anyone that's going to do that within our city should have a permit.
Very good. Uh, is that a motion, Laura?
Yes.
Okay, do I get a second on Laura's motion?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Very good. Discussion?
Does that mean that Tom and Whitey and I can't go down there next Saturday with our white buckets?
No, can't. I want you stopped.
Did they pass and state who it was?
There was some kind of a tape around the thing. I couldn't really see. It was a paint bucket. It said the name of the paint on it, but there was a tape around it, some type of Christian association or something like that. Um, I have no idea, but I don't think that that's a proper way for them to collect their money.
Uh, Bob, I have a question. Do we have any type of an ordinance on the book?
No, Your Honor, we do not actually currently have any ordinance that would prohibit that conduct.
I see. Uh, John?
Your Honor, if I understand it correctly, the motion would be for report back with a recommendation.
Yes.
Okay, could I do that for the second meeting in, uh, November?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Very good. Any other discussion? Ooh, look at those hands go up. Uh, Tom and then Joanne?
I presume that we're just going to look at some other brilliant examples of anti- panhandling legislation.
But I don't think that's panhandling if they were getting donations.
Well, one, one, what it is.
I thought it was just people looking for money, but they're looking for donate. We do it with a boot, but they come to the city council for permission. You know, on Lafayette Road at the stop sign on Sunday, they sell the Sunday paper on Pebbley and Lafayette, and so I don't mind, you know, so just, I throw that in as you're researching this, uh, and that happens in a lot of communities.
But you know it was the paper, but she didn't know what she was giving the dollar for. I just don't think that people should come into three rows of traffic and converge on cars, especially when you don't have any idea what they're doing. There was no signs, no nothing.
There was no signs, no nothing, just this little tape around the bucket, uh, and I certainly do not want our streets to become like they are in Florida, that they're selling anything from flowers to whatever you might want, and they converge on you and expect you to buy them, and I don't think that's what's, was made up, made of.
Joanne?
You know, along with that, um, I think I spoke to Bob a while ago about people coming to your door, um, and, um, they, um, selling a variety of things, and they'll tell you they're nonprofit, and I, because I've asked them, "Do you have a permit?" And they'll say, "Well, we're nonprofit, we don't need one," but I understand they do need one, is that correct?
We do have an ordinance that regulates that conduct, and those people need a license from the city clerk's office.
Okay, thanks.
So now, uh, Kelly, would you read the motion?
It's just for a report back from the city manager at the second meeting in November.
Okay, and I got a second? Did I get a second?
Whitey, yep, yes.
Okay, we all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now we're down to, do we have any miscellaneous or unfinished business?
Yes, Your Honor.
Oh, I was looking at Harold.
I'd like Kelly to help me, um, this, um, Wednesday night is Saturday night again. Yes. And I believe it's, I'm not sure, but did I understand that the staff is six, and you're going to be there at some point? Um, I don't know the exact time it starts, I know that I am, they've asked me to speak regarding voter registration from seven fifteen, um, till approximately, um, seven thirty or so. Um, did I understand also that you're going to talk on the, um, constitutional question? I am not speaking to the constitutional amendment question. There is a voter's guide that will be available at the polls on Election Day for those people that have questions concerning the constitutional amendment. Thank you. You're welcome.
Very good. Okay, uh, Harold?
I move for adjourn, Your Honor.
Very good. A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Very good.